Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting of December 4th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Shrewsbury Media Connection through the work of John McDonald, and it will be rebroadcast between now and our next meeting on December 18th. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to speak to the committee this evening, but if anyone wishes to do so in the future, please reach out. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anyone have anything this evening?
Yeah.
Nope, I actually do. Jason, myself, and John Wensky, we participated in Spelling Bee on November 15th at Sherwood.
We judged the Spelling Bee.
We judged. We didn't participate, thank goodness.
We were not qualified.
We found that out quickly, and it was at Oak on November 22nd. And I just want to announce the winners. The winner of the Sherwood was Sekate, I have to pronounce this right, Madusan Madusudan. And the winner of the Oak was William Chen. John Wensky was the pronouncer. I think Jason and I were very grateful that we didn't have to do that. And Jason and I were the judges, and I think not only were these students extremely skilled, they were also extremely polite, extremely respectful with each other. And it was really a fun evening, and we really learned that we don't know how to spell a lot of those words.
The top two students at Sherwood went over fifty rounds against one another, spelling words mostly of German and Dutch origin.
Yep, fifty-six rounds, and I think Oak was about twenty-six rounds. So it was a really fun event.
Sixty-five in total. It was fifty-six that the top two went against each other.
Exactly. So hopefully, they'll do that again next year, and we'd be happy to participate as well. So congratulations to the winners. Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out and congratulate the Shrewsbury High School Cheerleading Team, who are the regional champions for the fall season, and were able to compete in the state championships. So congratulations to that team. Also, winter is here, the vengeance already at the beginning of December. And I wanted to just publicly thank the Department of Public Works, the Public Buildings, and Highway and Parks Divisions for the, this is a long duration of storm. They had to do a lot of work to not only take care of the roads in the community, but our school campuses. We did have our first two snow days of the year, which I know our senior class is particularly pleased with, because they don't make those days up. But we were able to get into school today after a longer-than-expected Thanksgiving break, and we're back in business. But we'll continue to appreciate the work that those departments do to help make sure our school campuses are cleared of snow and salted and sanded and everything, and to make sure that we can maximize the safety of our students and staff. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you. First on the agenda will be an annual athletics report, and we will ask Mr. Jason Costa to direct our athletics, as well as a few student athletes to join us. When you get settled, we'll have you introduce yourselves.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Just coming off the clog with the first day of tryouts, so everyone's running in. We're not showing ours. So, thank you for having us. I'll have my partners here introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Lauren Lemay. Do I introduce the sports I'm from? Field hockey and basketball. I was the captain for field hockey. Now I just started my tryouts for basketball today.
I'm Colleen McNamara. I play field hockey, indoor track, and lacrosse.
And my name is John West. I'm a baseball and basketball player at the high school.
And they also serve as our student ambassadors to the MIA, which we'll go into a little bit into our report. So we'd like, thank you for having us again, and thank you for all your support. We really like to also thank the Parks and Recreation Department for all their hard work in getting our fields ready, especially with having the turf. It was a little bit easier, but still, a lot of the grass fields need some attention. We had the battle of the triple E this fall. So their hard work in adjusting the schedules and being able to accommodate our needs, but also the needs of the community, I really like to say thank you to them. For our last year, eighteen-nineteen Annual Report, we were fortunate enough to increase our athletic participation to four hundred and eighty-nine students per season. We had a total of fourteen-hundred, a little over fourteen-hundred athletes last year. That increase was also due to the fact that we had a few more offerings. We were able to offer two more soccer teams at the freshman level. We were able to offer freshman baseball. We didn't have enough girls to do a freshman softball, but it was available there if we had enough. And we also saw, with the increase of our middle school programs, which I'll get into a little bit more in the report, so it was a great thing to see, having more kids participate as we continue to grow as a student body, giving them the opportunities there. It just makes a big difference. And it's also helped out our varsity programs by allowing, you know, more kids to develop, especially that freshman and the sophomore year. There's a lot of development going on. It gives some kids more opportunity to represent our schools. We offered thirty-six different sports last year, sixty-one teams with those increased, and we had over eight hundred contests. That included regular season and playoffs. Majority of our teams, we had twenty-eight out of thirty-one teams qualify for postseason play last year. We increased our coaching staff to seventy-eight coaches, and we also increased, it was thirty-nine volunteer coaches this past year. So that's awesome, and it contributes to the program, I think, with our head coaches. A lot of people want to get involved with our program. We're really grateful for all that they do. We actually, last year was a unique year. We had ten national letters of intent to play at the Division One and Two level, and we had another thirteen athletes that reported they were going on to play at the Division Three level. It's kind of hard to stand in front of the student body and say, "This is a rare occasion," even though the last few years and a few of the students here tonight were able to sign their NLI's in the past couple of weeks. But it's, again, a compliment to the kids' hard work and the families and their commitment to their programs, to be able to get that opportunity to play at the college level and also get some money to pay for school. As you can see, looking from, you know, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we've had over two hundred students more playing sports. So again, it's another thing, I think it's, what's our great opportunity for developing kids in life, all the life skills that they learn through athletics, and now we're giving more students that opportunity. If you could take a look here, you look at our season breakdown, the fall season is usually the biggest. I think that's the most energy that everyone has. The smiles on everyone's face in August. These guys laugh. It's just a different atmosphere, not that the other seasons don't have that, but the fall, there's a lot of energy. We do offer more sports in the fall, too, so that's another reason why that increased. And you look at the winter, it's not as high, and that's because of just the nature of the sports, their rosters aren't that big. For example, basketball, you don't usually keep more than twelve to fourteen players per roster. This is another great feature, I think, about our athletic program, is that we were able to offer more sports at the middle school level. With Oak Middle being the former high school, we have the facilities there to be able to do that. And I'm really grateful that we were able to allow our students to represent the Oak Middle School community more throughout the year. So we increased field hockey in the fall, and then in spring, we increased baseball and softball. And all those programs did great. I think our field hockey team went undefeated in their first year. And our baseball and softball teams were very competitive. I think only losing maybe one or two games each for their season. So, again, we were at, before, we had cross-country basketball and cheerleading. We also, sorry, we also added outdoor track, which was another hundred and twenty-five students were able to participate. Again, I was able to get over there on a day where the track meet was going on, a baseball game was going on, softball, and being a graduate, it brought back a lot of great memories to be able to stand up on the rock and watch that environment. So if you get an opportunity in the spring to see that, it's just a great atmosphere, and the energy level was great. Again, I think our student-athlete success through their hard work has benefited. At the conference level, we had over seventy-three All-Stars, four MVPs. We had forty Telegram Gazette All-Stars with one Player of the Year. We had eighteen Central Mass All-Stars and four All-State athletes. So again, that was a very good athletic class. You could see by the ten NLI's that they were very successful. From a team standpoint, we were able, the girls' hockey, I think, have won their eleventh straight league title, which is incredible to do, and it was very hard. It's getting harder and harder each year as you have the team that they're gunning for. Our boys' indoor track were district champions. This was a great feat for them. And our baseball team won the Central Mass Championship and went on to the state championship. We were already out of school, and they were still practicing for a whole week, waiting to get to the state championship. So, again, another great, successful year for our teams. Financially, looking at our budget, you can see how with more teams and more kids participating, we had more, more funding was needed for our budget. So we're about eight hundred thousand, a little over, just shy of nine hundred thousand dollars to operate our athletic program from the high school all the way down to the middle school level. Our gate receipts, that took a little bit of a hit last year, and that was because the turf was not ready until mid-October, so we had to play a lot of games on the road. And also, we had to play a football game, I think, at Assumption College, and sometimes the attendance was a little bit lower, plus we had to pay rent to do that. We were grateful for Assumption for helping us out on one of our football games. But you can see, we're pretty consistent as far as our financials go. And the different breakdowns of the general fund, we're about fifty-three percent funded. Student athletic fees bring in about forty-three percent, with gate receipts bringing about just shy of four percent. Our program wouldn't function without the support of our Shrewsbury Boosters Association and Friends of Shrewsbury Crew. They continue again and again and again to step up and provide us with the needs to be successful in our program. In return, what's great, too, is our athletes get involved with the different fundraising. So it gives them a sense of appreciation as far as, you know, our program, our equipment, and just the fact of being a part of the team. One of the greatest things we could have ever done, our turf field, this is, you know, we're just so happy and grateful that the community, and we talked about this in the past year, the atmosphere is just different. It's a college-like atmosphere when we host our events. We're very grateful for this field, and it has enabled us to do a lot of different things that we haven't been able to do in the past. One of the things that we have not had to really cancel many games because of rain. We played right through them. Some of the, I think our lacrosse team learned how cold it is in March and April up there as far as the wind, but our lacrosse team, boys' and girls' lacrosse teams tried out outside. So they were right from the beginning, we were able to go. And they were the first time being able to play in the stadium, which is just a different atmosphere for them. It was great. We had over sixty contests since October two thousand and eighteen, where in the past, we were averaging between thirty-five to forty, only in the fall season. And, you know, we were still trying to figure out how the turf was going to work. So that number's going to definitely increase over time, because now that we know what our schedule is like, how we can open it up to the community and get our youth teams up there. So we're very excited about that. The other great thing that happened with this turf field is we've been able to host numerous MIA events. And in return, because I committed our school to be host site, this past fall, for example, I committed our soccer team, and they were able to host a sectional semifinal game at Shrewsbury High School, being the lower seed. Same with our field hockey team. So that was a great benefit. It gave us that home-field opportunity, and again, a great playing surface. But it also, for example, we hosted a state semifinal football game. And just to hear the communities that were visiting us, talking about the facility and seeing this atmosphere, they loved our Jumbotron, we were able to, you know, put some life into the game by doing that. So, and again, I think the other piece, like we touched about earlier, was Parks and Recreation was able to focus on other areas in town and also other fields at the high school. Next part, I'm going to turn over to our students to talk about some of the student leadership and perspectives that we have within our athletic program.
All right. So, from my perspective, something I've seen over the past three years of being at Shrewsbury High School is just an increase in the overall, like, stress on leadership and student leadership. That's credit to Mr. Costa and administration, Student Council, and things like that. We do captain summits, like numerous over the years. We have student leadership summits throughout school due to Student Council, and we've been fortunate enough to go to Gillette Stadium and some other MIA leadership conferences as well. And I've seen, I think it's made a huge impact on our athletic program as a whole. You see teams that, like, may have been struggling in the past, they start to kind of like kickstart and like kind of like start to do better over time, and you notice it. And I think a huge part of that is due to the leadership that's been coming through the high school through the sportsman summits, workshops, and things like that.
Going off that, I think the past four years have just provided all the teams with so many opportunities to grow as individuals and then translate that to the teams. I know personally, running cross-country and doing track, it just teaches to push, push, push. And the harder you work, the greater the rewards. And then lacrosse, I know, being in such a competitive league we are, it made me personally want to play at the collegiate level, which completely transformed my game, and then also gave leadership opportunities doing the captain summits with Noel. And then it just makes you want to become, like, a better leader and strive to do that. And then in field hockey, I think, I switched from cross-country to field hockey, and that just, like, emphasized change, that, like, it's okay to change, but also just, like, gave memories and lifelong friends. So I think overall, through every game, and me, you're just, learn responsibility, leadership skills, and dedication. And I know Mr. Costa, he always says, "We, us, our." It's never "I." And that character, I think, is what my biggest takeaway is from the past four years, that whole character aspect.
In our school, like, I feel like regardless of your age or, like, your grade, you can always be a leader. Like, it's not just, like, you have to be a captain or, like, you have to be a senior. Like, I feel like through our athletic programs, we've learned that, like, you can be a freshman and still be a leader to, like, your senior, like, above you. I've also learned a lot that, like, our programs are like a family, like, regardless of your team, your age, like, it's like, we all are connected by, like, sports, because we all love to play. Like, I just feel like regardless of anything, just, I feel like everyone loves to be a part of Shrewsbury Athletics.
So one of the things they talked about is one of the captain summits that we did, we worked with a MMPE, which is Noel and Chris Foy. Noel was a behavior specialist in her former job, and she retired from that. And Chris was a former basketball coach at Algonquin, battled cancer, overcame the obstacle of that, was, played basketball at B.C., and they joined together to come up with a program that talked about brain development. So they started off with the whole going over mindsets, and we talked about how the brain functions and how that can lead to stressful situations, how to deal with those stressful situations. So last year, we did that for about six different, like, one-hour workshops throughout the year. It was a little unique. It was uncharted waters for us, but I already see the beneficials, especially for the junior captains that were involved with that, now as seniors. And then we went back, we did a little bit of a professional development as far as, in August, we kind of tweaked the way we do things as far as leadership skills, so we worked on that. The other great thing is having Walter Hildenbrand, and I can't say enough, and I forgot to say a big thank you to Walter, like, we call, what would we say? Walter's the man. You know, and what he does for our program, the hours that he spends rehabbing our kids, and the knowledge he has about the injuries, and being able to talk to parents. And there were some pretty serious injuries over the years, and being able to calm parents and athletes down and work with them to try to get them back, or, you know, whatever they needed to do to be back on the field. And the other great thing that he does, and again, he doesn't get paid any extra or anything for this, is he brings on a couple of students per year to intern with him. And he, it's tough. Like, I thought it was okay, the kids are going to come in, they're going to help tape, they're going to get the equipment ready. No, he's, like, going over the anatomy, he's quizzing them, they have tests. There's just days they walk out of there stressed out. But it's another great benefit, I think, to our program is having, being able to have Walter full-time, being able to work with students. And those are students that are interested in going into the field of sports medicine, whether it's becoming a doctor, or a physician assistant, or even an athletic trainer. You know, some of them go through the experience and like, "Okay, no, not for me." Or some of them are like, it reiterates what they want to go in. And he seems to be the go-to person within Central Mass, too, as far as athletic trainers. So we're very grateful to have him. I know, one of the things I'd like to talk about is just how, what their experience was like as an athlete. It was something I would like to see them, if, you know, if they don't mind sharing. And talk about your goals. I know where you guys might be going if you continue in your career.
So, I mean, I can't say enough great things about my times in athletics at Shrewsbury. I mean, every team I've played for, and even just going to other, like, teams to support them and watch their games, like, the environment has just been awesome. The coaching staffs have been second to none. It's just, it's, like, there's no other word, like, other than awesome. Like, it's really been a great experience, and I can't thank everyone enough for everything they've done for me over the years. I just, I've grown so much, not only as a player, but as a leader, and it's given me so many opportunities outside of sports, such as speaking at different events and stuff like that, Teacher Student, or Teacher Development Day and stuff like that. And I think I can say that's thanks to the sports and the leadership that I've grown to, like, develop over the years at Shrewsbury High School, and, yeah, that's how I'd describe it.
Yeah. I think, I already touched upon a little bit about the individual, like, benefits I've had from Shrewsbury, but I think you can have the athletic and the competitiveness in nearly any program, but what sets Shrewsbury High School apart is just the character and the person you come out of the four years. I know I was a completely different person freshman year, and the skills we learn through each sport and each person you meet and each coach, that's something you'll carry for the rest of your life.
For me, Shrewsbury Athletics, like, it's allowed me to make friends that I feel like I'm going to have for the rest of my life. It's allowed me to create bonds with people like Costa and Walter, that, like, now they're, like, my mentors, and I can go, go to them for stuff that's more than just sports. And, like, I just feel like, for me, this opportunity created, like, I don't know, just a great experience for me. All I know is that the coaches are amazing. I've had a few for, like, each sport throughout the whole process of my four years. I've had several coaches, but I feel like all of them have been so amazing. Like, we just do a great job with our athletic programs as a whole.
You know, you're getting old. I went to school with both parents of mine. You know, time flies by over the years. So, but I'd like to thank you and open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Lindsey?
I want to really thank all of you for coming and talking to us about your experience, and the words that you use are sort of the bedrock of what a school system should be about. You talk about character and growth and perseverance and respect, and I'm like, I feel like you just, like, took all the words out of our portrait of a graduate, right? Like, what we're hoping for, for everybody. So I'm really impressed and really excited about all of it, and the growth is awesome. I guess a question more for you, Mr. Costa, is the, because it's so central to what we're doing, how do we make sure that all kids can get access to it? And I saw in your report, there's a couple of kids that have highlighted that, I know sports are expensive, right? And they're, whether they, whether we want them to be or not, and we try to mitigate it, but what is the balance that we try to make sure that kids who don't have the ability to buy the extra shoes or do the thing, that they really have a space where they can say that? And be okay with that? And that we, you know, I know we have a community that would like to support them, but it's all about having a space to say that, because clearly, the teams would be great and will be very welcoming. I got that. So could you just speak to kind of what that looks like? And anything that you might need sort of from our end to make sure that everybody knows they can participate and that this is an important, you know, piece of education in the schools?
Yeah. I think the big piece is the relationship building is, has enabled that to happen, not only with the coaches, but amongst the students. We do have a fund that's set up through the Booster Club, the Leo Murray Fund. So we have the Leo Murray Golf Classic every June, and that is in memory of our former golf coach, Leo Murray, who unfortunately passed away unexpectedly. And he was the type of guy that, wherever you needed, he'd come in, write a check, and say, "Okay, you find me a kid, help him out." So one of the things that the Booster's has been able to keep his legacy going. So we do have students now that have been able to come up to us, whether it's a captain or someone noticing that someone may not be buying the gear that they need for the program, or knowing that someone may not come out because of a fee issue. We've kind of tried to identify those people, reach out to them privately, and offer those experiences. And I can't say that we get everyone, but we've done, I think, a pretty good job of trying to help out those students in need. And, you know, it's tough. That's a tough conversation to have, you know, especially sometimes having it with the parents. But again, I think that's the comfort zone of our leaders, being able to come to my office. My office door is always open when they can come and talk to me, so. Uh where they can come and talk to me. So, you know, I wish, I do, you know, you have almost nineteen hundred students in the school, you'd love to have them all participating. Um and we'll continue to try to work on that.
Thank you. Okay, one follow-up question, do um for young people who want a tryout in, in something, they're not sure, are fees attached before tryouts? Or after? How's that, how's that work?
No, so what we do is we wait till the final rosters are picked. And then once the final roster's come in from the coaches, we assign the fee and power school. Um so that's something we learned through the uh years of uh of fees, before we used to start off, assign them all and then try to refund, it was crazy. So now what we do is we um, you know, wait till the final rosters come in. So it usually takes like, for example, winter sports right now, we're just starting. Probably get final rosters next week, just probably before Christmas and after the new year.
Well, it helps me also gives a little bit of a window to meet an adult who's involved, maybe meet a captain, to kind of. Open up some of those relationships in order to say, hey, I'm really interested, but I don't know if I'm able to make this, make this work.
Right. And then also too, with thick, you know, after a week or so, you get some of those track athletes that are like, whoa, this is a lot more than I expected. Then I penalize for it and say, hey, thanks for your money, run.
I'm not gonna judge them, I'm not judging them, that's okay. We can all change our minds. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank our student athletes for being here tonight. We appreciate not only hearing your perspective, but also the leadership that you so obviously provide. To all of our other athletes, so thank you for the work that you guys are always doing. Question on the fourteen sixty-six number. Would, is that unique students or would that double count someone, an athlete who did a fall in a winter sport?
Yeah, it could double up. So what we do is we create each roster spot as one position. So that could be a number of three sport athletes. Two sport ath- athletes. That number has decreased over the years as far as multiple sport athletes. And I think it's part of uh the club era.
But would it count a multi-season athlete?
Yes, yes, so it could be, uh someone could be recorded three times.
Still an impressive number on a school with less than nineteen hundred kids, so good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's always impactful for us to have students come and to hear directly from you um what you like, what you don't like. And and as a parent of form athletes, I miss they're long out of school. I miss the days of going up to see games, even when it was freezing and cold. It's, it becomes part of your life when you're doing that with your kids. Um how long have you been the A D?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years, I thought it was twelve, so fourteen. And I think I've seen this program, I mean, it's always been a great program, but I, I love how we're really incorporating. Leadership and other skills. Yes, you're great athletes, but you're also learning other skills are gonna take you far through life. So thank you for, you know, really encouraging that with our program. I think that's unique as well as we move forward. Can you talk about what you're planning? I know, so are you, some of you are gonna go on and play in college, have you decided?
So next year, I'm gonna be attending Boston College on a baseball scholarship.
Excellent.
I'm playing lacrosse for Manhattan College.
Oh, excellent.
I don't really know what I'm doing as of now.
That's all right.
But I have some time to figure it out.
Definitely, definitely. But it get, this gave you a good foundation to kind of look at what, what your opportunities are, which is another big thing as we look. To adulting, which is not always that fun. Any other comments, Dr. Sawyer?
Um certainly want to thank the student athletes and Mr. Costa for the report and Mr. Bizillo, who's here this evening, who I know contributed to the report. Uh that's in your packets as, as well. Um a couple of things, I'm, I'm hoping maybe the student athletes can expand upon a little bit too. In terms of, I know Lauren mentioned it a little bit, but the, when we talk about culture and the environment of the teams and, and you know, sometimes uh. Unfortunately, you see things in the media about uh negative experiences kids might have with high school athletics, having to do with hazing. Or having to do with those kinds of elements. And I, I, one thing that I've appreciated and I've seen it both, you know, from my position. Um as well as a, a parent of, of student athletes, um that feeling of, of being welcoming, especially to underclassmen. Um can you talk a little bit about how the, the you as captains and also other members of the team try to set up an environment where kids feel accepted? And and don't feel that there's that pecking order or that, or going further down that line to something that could be very damaging in terms of a kind of culture that'd be more about. Negativity as opposed to more of a positive culture.
I know um with each game, like for field hockey example, we all hold pinkies and say family. And um so we try to illustrate the family aspect. And also I know every coach before voting for captains always says. Um it can be anyone, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, anyone who you think can lead. And I think that sets the tone also for the season that. We're all leaders and that we all impact each other.
And for, oh, sorry. And for both of my sports last year and for field hockey this year, we do big sister and little sister. Where like in a junior or a senior pair up with a sophomore or a freshman. And basically the senior is like the little sister's like role model and like you get each other like gifts. And like you're just like each other's like person. I just feel like that like makes both JV teams and the varsity teams like feel like one. And I feel like that's a great thing to have for like a sport program because like it brings it all together.
So I feel like in the past, you, you mentioned like hazing and things like that with like upperclassmen and underclassmen. It was almost like it's, it seemed like a rite of passage for like the freshmen to come in. It's like, oh, like you, you go do all these tasks, you go get the waters. You go go like fill the, like get the balls, like do all that stuff and just you just bark orders at and it almost makes you feel like. But I feel like in the past and I, I can think of an example with working with the Foy's, not only did they work on. Like mindset and stuff like that, they talked about team unity. An example I thi- I could think of is um, like they said. You, maybe instead of telling the freshman to go get the waters, telling the freshman to go get the balls, why don't you be, set the example as a leader captain, why don't you go do it? And that's something that's stuck with me and I, I think about it, being the captain in the past and. That happened last year with some of our senior basketball captains, they were like, you know, instead of having us, let's just, let's start doing it. And maybe it'll trickle down throughout the team. And that's such a team unity of just like being more welcoming to freshmen, just being more open um. And just making it feel like you got an open door to like come talk to you or whatever. Just rather than just being like separating younger classmen, upperclassmen, just coming together as one. They talk about family, that's, I feel like that's a big core of Shrewsbury Athletics. And that's what's been making the difference.
I appreciate that. One other thing I'd like you to, to speak on, I think maybe Lauren, you were involved with this, uh but I, you know, some of you, and you mentioned about having different coaches. And one of the, one of Mr. Costa's most important responsibilities is, is recommending coaches for hire when we do have turnover. Um and I know that uh it may be between both as a, our students participate in that, just like we do when we hire teachers. Um maybe Mr. Costa could talk a little bit about the process that we go through, but then also how students are involved as well.
Yeah. So what we do is, so we, we have a head coaching position open. Um what we do is we have a panel. Uh where we'll have myself, uh we've got current coach on the staff, um we'll have a parent. And we'll also have our student captains, our, our captains, or if there's not enough captains or any captains elected, we'll, we'll select some students to be a part of the process. And I think, well, at first years ago, in my immature days, I was like, why are we doing this? Like, I'm the A D, I should be able to figure this out. And as I've grown up, like these guys. Uh I've learned the value, the, 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 the great perspectives that you get from everyone. Uh and especially the student athletes. So I'll let them talk a little bit about that, but from my standpoint, is that's who we're in the business for. So that's when I, when it comes down to that last choice of who that coach is gonna be. I really look at their information, what they've written down and what they have said in that closed-door meeting about what they want for a coach. Because, you know, like we've, I've told parents, this is, it's great, I know the parents want certain people, but most, most importantly, it's what they want. And uh that's made that job in transition easier to be able to bring in our coaches we do. And I'll let you guys, I know you guys have been a part of that.
Okay, so I did this like last spring it was about and for field hockey. And first of all, I just say it's sort of stressful, just because there's so many applicants that come and like apply, like Costa said. And then we have like eight of them come and get an interview and just like the amount of people that want to be a part of our like school community is insane. But like the process itself, I learned that like our perspectives are very different. Like the adults have a very different perspective than like the students do. Like we know what we want and they know what they want. So like it was cool to like have like the con- the, the, the conversation about like the, the, the differences. Um between what he wants and what I want. Like um, I don't really know how to else to explain it. Just there was just, it was cool to have a conversation, I guess, because if he was um just to pick them alone, I'm sure a lot of the coaches would probably be different.
Um I personally have not had to go through the selecting process of a coach, but uh this spring I will for the new lacrosse coach. But I know, I think the coaches that fit within our program are the ones you get to tryouts. Um and I think all my coaches have said this. Where it's, okay, I'm looking for not necessarily the best skills, but who's working the hardest, who's sweating the most, that type of thing. That fits so well to the culture of Shrewsbury.
I also have been fortunate enough to have two really good coaches, uh four, three, going out to four years with Coach Chatau, Coach Daimo. Um but I've talked to some friends who have gone through the process of having a new coach and stuff like that. And I, I know it makes a huge difference being able to be a part of the selection process, I guess. Um I know it makes it easier for them to like can, I don't understand like how the coaches are connecting with these players. Because sometimes when you have a coach who's presenting themselves to parents or Mr. Costa, like. You don't really get a chance to see like the connection of how they connect with their players and with the students. And I think that's a really important part of it. Because, I mean, after all, they're coaching the players and the students. So I know it makes a big difference. Um but yeah.
Well, I just want to thank you again and uh, you know, we are very proud of the, of the program that's been developed. Uh we're proud of the student athletes and coaches and everyone, Mr. Costa, that uh that supports this. Um for all the reasons you stated so eloquently, um it's really an important part of, of uh the education our students receive. For those who choose to participate in sports, and whether it's this, in this case, it's athletics, athletics, robotics, speech and debate, the arts. Um you know, it's finding these opportunities that in addition to the academics really help shape um our students' character. And and shape them in ways that enable them to hopefully be successful in their years, once they're, once they finish. As well as having the great memories and and building lifelong friendships. And that's uh something that is, is really important to us as, as a school district. So congratulations, excellent job presenting this evening, you guys are, you're, you're, someone's gonna hire you pretty soon. Um good luck with your decisions. To congratulate those in, in Lauren, I'm sure it'll work out great, wherever you decide, whatever you decide to do. Good luck in the rest of your, your seasons this year as a senior. And I too am feeling a little bit old because, you know, I'm also the parent of a senior athlete. And I've seen you guys grow up from little playing bitty games to now being very successful high school varsity athletes, which is, which is really gratifying for. Your parents and community members who've had the opportunity to do that. So thank you uh for the presentation and, and uh best wishes for continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Collins will provide an enrollment projection report. Uh this is information that we use in our short and long-term planning. So it's appropriate as we begin the budget cycle.
Okay, so you have a lot of materials that we sent to you with respect to enrollment data. And forecasting information. And I'm just gonna summarize uh some of those pieces of information for you. In this presentation. And as you said, um at the outset, Mrs. Fritz, we use this information for both. Uh short and long-term planning. And uh, you know, while uh the long-term planning is primarily around. Uh school space, we have the Beal Project uh ongoing for, to help solve our K through four uh space issues. You know, what we're looking at now with these enrollment projections is a more near term, so next school year in particular. And so at the end of this, I'll just kind of summarize what we think this information is telling us for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh so as I've talked about before, there are a couple of methods that we look at and a couple of different independent enrollment projections. That have been traditionally used uh to help us look ahead. Uh one is produced out of the town manager's office. And the second one is from the New England School Development Council, uh or NESDEC from Marlboro. And they both use this so-called cohort survival ratio, which I'll show in the next slide, what that means, a little bit more detail. But it basically looks at a cohort of students uh from one grade level advancing to the next. And what percentage of students actually progress from one grade level to the next. And it changes a little bit with each grade. And certainly at those breakpoints of going from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. So uh NESDEC uses uh looking at a, a three-year cohort survival ratio. And the town manager projection looks at, at a five-year. So we're getting, you know, different looks at this and some different results. But the cohort survival uh method, basically in the middle of the screen, you can see uh this, this cohort survival ratio. And so where it says average one point one eight one, that basically means that for the kin- the five-year average. From the nearest five years, that uh the number of kindergarten students that we had in the district uh was X. And that when they, uh when we open up school for the succeeding year in grade one, we have eighteen point one percent more. On average. Uh and so basically then what you're doing is you're taking the current kindergarten. Cohort and multiplying that times that cohort survival ratio to predict what next year's grade uh one will be. So that's how this method works. Um and those are all the cohorts survival ratios. You know, I would just point you not only to the, the K to one, which is an eighteen percent increase, that's a, that's a really big increase. But if you look at uh grade eight to nine, which is about three-quarters of the way down there, eighty percent of the way down there, you'll see it goes down to. Point nine one percent. So obviously, we know that a number of our eighth graders will opt to go to different high schools, whether it be. Aspen Valley Vocational High School or St. John's or some other private school in the area. So on a five-year average basis, you'll see that, you know, we lose about nine percent of our eighth graders to other high schools. Uh but in the eighteen nineteen school year, uh you know, we lost only five percent. So that's where these averages, you know, get a little bit tricky uh in terms of trying to predict the one-year ahead look, look ahead. And so down in the below there, I just, you know, highlighted in yellow uh this cohort in twenty sixteen of a kindergarten grade. Of three hundred and eighty-eight students and how they progressed to grade one. That turned into four hundred and twenty-four students. And then in grade two, it turned into four hundred and forty-seven students and four sixty-nine. So, you know, it, it keeps getting bigger. And bigger and bigger. And then until uh they reached ninth grade, they dropped from uh, that, that cohort dropped from. Uh five twenty down to four seventy-four. So that's how the method works. NESDEC does the same thing and they produce these very good-looking reports for us. I know it's hard to read in the screen, you have it in, in electronically. Uh but again, they use the same kind of method, but they look at not just a five-year average, but a shorter, more recent three-year average. And so we're getting some different results in terms of predicting the future. This slide just summarizes uh our enrollment. Kindergarten only, not, not including preschool, K through twelve, five years ago, twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen. We had fifty-seven hundred and eighty-two students. Uh this year, that same grade span, K through twelve, we increased up to. Six thousand thirty-one. And then next year, it's predicted to go down slightly from these two projections down to fifty-nine sixty-nine. And then five years out. So it's five years back, current, one year ahead, and then five year ahead. Uh and where we think uh these, these predictions uh tell us where they think we're gonna be. So this looks at a little bit of a slight decline over time. But that being said, I'm gonna show you some information. Uh that might contradict that drop-off. Um so. Different than uh prior years, I did do, uh and we kind of did this kind of internally, but I'm producing it here on the slide. We would do kind of our own look at what we thought was gonna happen for next year. And we need to plan safely. For uh enrollment and having uh reasonable class sizes and don't want to have surprises. So uh for next year, the K through twelve enrollment uh projection by the town manager is the fifty-nine sixty-nine. NESDEC is forecasting fifty-nine forty-eight. And then um when we look at those two. And use our own kind of analysis, a more recent analysis, not looking at just pure averages, but kind of the high points. We're predicting over six thousand, six thousand eleven students in grades K through twelve for next year. And we've assumed higher cohort survival ratios for kindergarten, grade one and grade nine. And those are the, those are the three grade spans where you have the highest variability. So what we want to do is plan safely. And predicting those uh higher numbers. That's what that yellow bar is. This is basically just taking the same information uh by grade span on the bottom, K through four. In the red is Sherwood Middle School, grades five through six. The green is Oak. And then the high school's purple. And taking again the same forecast and looking at um what those grade span predictions are. For one year ahead. for, uh, one year ahead and five year ahead. So that's the town manager projection, that's the NESDEC projection by grade span. And then what we do is we take, uh, what they, they, what they do is they say, this is how many students we think you're gonna have by grade level. And that is very helpful, uh, for our secondary schools or, you know, middle school and high schools. Uh, but not so much helpful on elementary schools because they're dispersed across five different elementary schools, of course. So what we have to do is kind of break that down and, uh, make predictions by individual elementary school. Of course, what we know is our current student enrollment and we grade advance them. And then, uh, we apply certain percentages to, uh, where the increases are going to be. And then in particular, uh, kindergarten and grade one, and how we think that's gonna break out. So for next year, this is our initial projection. And, uh, we're looking at, uh, as you'll see in the red here highlighted, that based upon the total enrollment and how these class sections break out, uh, that at this point, we're not thinking we're gonna need any new teaching FTE for, uh, next fiscal year. That our enrollment is, uh, looking at, you know, elementary schools fairly flat, fairly level, so no new FTE. We've got some shifts around how many sections we have at various grade levels within the school itself, uh, which you can read there. So some changes at Patton and Coolidge, uh, in Beal, uh, no real changes at Floral or Spring Street at this particular point. And then, of course, we'll take a closer look as we go through the budget process. Uh, we get more information from, uh, kindergarten, kind of pre-enrollment processes. Uh, and things become a little bit more real as time progresses. But, uh, this is kind of the initial look. And you'll see that, you know, the average class sizes look pretty good at the elementary schools. We do have a couple of areas, uh, Coolidge School, I'll point out, grade three. Predicting ninety-eight students in four sections, so an average of twenty-five. That would be about one over, uh, the, the maximum guideline. Um, and then, uh, grade three at Spring Street School, uh, seventy-seven students with three sections, uh, worth an average of twenty-six per class. So that would be two above, uh, guideline. But again, we'll take a closer look as we get, go on. And then all the other sections on averages right now, we're predicting to be, uh, within, uh, guideline. This is what it looks at, uh, for, uh, middle school and high schools. Uh, again, the, uh, grade six, um, and grade seven would be just slightly above guideline, um, at twenty-five and twenty-six average per class. And then the high school total enrollment would be, uh, eighteen eighty. Not an all-time high, but still, uh, high enough. Certainly you know that we're operating at ninety-nine percent, uh, room utilization right now there. So we had certainly a stressed capacity at the high school. Preschool enrollment, this is something that we'd just like to point out, uh, as it changes during the year a lot. And that is because, uh, as students, uh, who turn age three and become eligible for public school-provided special education services, they turn age three, of course, at all points during the year. And so when they turn age three, they become eligible, uh, and move out of kind of so-called early intervention services into a public school, um, environment. And so we need to leave spaces for them. And so the yellow bar is the October one enrollment. So on the far left, you can see October one, twenty fourteen, we had two hundred and thirty-four students. By the near end of that school year, on June first of twenty fifteen, our enrollment climbed to two sixty-two at the preschool level. And so that's what each of these bars are for each succeeding school year. And so on average, again, it's about a fourteen percent increase at the preschool level during the school year. And that's something that we planned for in the preschool, has to be mindful about, uh, each school year. So, uh, how have these, uh, enrollment projections done on a one-year, uh, outlook basis? Uh, so this slide shows you, um, what the projected enrollment was for the current school year. So a year ago, there was some predictions made about what would happen for this school year, nineteen twenty, uh, by the town manager in the blue, and then also by NESDEC in the red. And then in the green is the actuals. And, uh, it was within ninety-nine percent accurate. Uh, but we did end up, uh, having, uh, more students than was predicted. And depending on the projection that you looked at, it was between thirty-three and forty-two more students than the projection, uh, had forecast. So this bar chart just shows you by grade level, again, the same information. And you can see kindergarten, um, you know, we kind of far exceeded the projections. We ended up with three hundred and sixty-three students, the projections were for three thirty-eight and three forty-seven. At grade one, we ended up with four hundred and twenty-six students this year. Your enrollment projections were for four oh five and four oh six. And then at grade nine, and that's why I put arrows on the bottom here to point out those big variations. We ended up in grade nine with four hundred and seventy students, the predictions were four forty-eight and four fifty-three. So we're trying to account for that, you know, right now in terms of our planning ahead. Uh, and then this is the same data just breaking out, broken out by, uh, grade level, K through four, five through six. And you can see the green in each of these areas, our enrollment exceeded the one-year projection, uh, slightly. And then the last chart that I'll show you was, uh, a chart that was done a while ago in terms of the information on the right, which was, uh, with, uh, in regard to the opening, uh, approval of the Beal School Project and the MSBA enrollment projection, which they did separately and independently. That's the green bar. And what they predicted for the twenty-five, uh, twenty-six school year is that we would have, uh, two thousand three hundred and twenty students in grades K through four. While at the same time, the two other independent projections that we use called for just over nineteen hundred students. Well, right now, we're at twenty-one fifty-two. So, uh, we've already, you know, we're exceeded, uh, those other projections. And I think we're on a pathway to continue to be the same and, and approach that, uh, MSBA projection as we go forward. Of course, one of the big changes, of course, will be transitioning to, uh, universal full-day kindergarten, which is not something that's accounted for in these cohort survival methods. They're just blind to that. It's a quantitative approach, looking at past, uh, doesn't take into, uh, account kind of future, uh, policy changes. So in summary and in closing, uh, I think that, uh, what we're looking at for next school year is, uh, overall level enrollment, uh, with the high school being near level as well. And, uh, again, we're at ninety-nine percent ru- room utilization. So being level is not necessarily a good thing for the high school, uh, it's very stressed. Right now, um, looking at the pre-K through eight projections, it's not likely that we'll need additional classroom, uh, teachers for next year. And, uh, finally, uh, that when we look at the, uh, arrangement of, uh, K through four students at each of our schools and at Beal, uh, we're predicting that we're gonna end up with, um, approximately two hundred and sixty to two hundred and seventy students who will be, uh, in a, in a full-day kindergarten seat, uh, in the balance, in a half-day kindergarten seat. And that will give us about seventy-seven percent of that, uh, cohort in a full-day kindergarten program. Uh, right now, we're at sixty-nine percent as of October one. Uh, so we'll have an increase in full-day kindergarten. And then, of course, the succeeding year, uh, when we open Beal, we'll be at a hundred percent. So those are kind of the summary highlights with respect to, uh, the, the key takeaways for the upcoming school year. And I'm happy to respond to any questions that the committee might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Jason?
Just a general comment, first of all, thank you for the report. On the cohort survival method, um, and certainly, I appreciate this report every year. And I understand, you know, that the tool we use, the tools we use here can be very helpful and very accurate for year-to-year predictions, especially for planning purposes, for class size. The year-to-year information yielded from this work is obviously very helpful and very much needed. The longer-term projections, and you of course alluded to just a minute ago, the limitations of the cohort survival method. It seems since, since I've been on the committee, it has forever predicted this, this ten, ten-year dip in our student population by a couple hundred. And I wanna highlight, you would include it in your report to us when you compare, and again, not year-to-year for planning purposes, for class size, but the overall size of our student enrollment as a district. You look at our two thousand fourteen enrollment projection for the fall of this year, uh, we've exceeded it by, depending on which method you use, basically five percent, about three hundred kids. And I think back to, I mean, looking at Mrs. Fritz, ten years ago in town meeting, sitting there and hearing how, oh, we were gonna start losing students soon and the population was gonna go down. And it's the, the sort of the long-term idea that our student population is gonna drop precipitously is sort of like the horizon itself and that it's forever in the future, but we never arrived there. And it's not so much a question as a comment on the cohort survival method. Again, as you alluded to, Mr. Collins, it's not something that considers housing starts or the turnover in our housing stock here in town, or the desirability of our community to li- to live in. Um, the point that I'm making here is that, while this is a useful tool, obviously, year-to-year, I wanna caution community members from reading too much into long-term predictions here because we remain a desirable place to live. Shrewsbury Public Schools perform very well, people wanna send their kids to school here. Our tax rate is lower than neighboring communities. We still don't have minimum lot size. This is a place that people wanna live and can continue to live. Uh, and so just the comment that I would make is again, while I see the value of year-to-year planning, the cohort survival method seems, um, fairly myopic when it comes to longer-term projections.
Thank you. I, you know, I would agree and, and certainly where, you know, we have been a, a growth community. And it's, I would say that the, the same is true, the limitations of the model is the same is true, uh, if you were in a community that was in serious decline. You know, if you had a lot of industry that had dried up and you were just looking at kind of past enrollment and not looking at the decline factors, you'd kind of experience, uh, you know, kind of the same negative, uh, forecast, but in a different way. Uh, so those are certainly limitations of the method.
Lindsay?
So this has been really interesting for me. And at the risk of being somebody who literally just did math on the back of an envelope, and, and I'm gonna say it out loud and maybe regret that.
It is literally an envelope.
Literally it's an envelope, but I just wrote on. Looking at your pro- the projections by, um, class size and the ele- elementary school, is it right to say that your, uh, we have those two different, um, models that we can use, but these numbers are actually come from the projections from the school department?
Yes.
So that higher figure, because it says to me, like, we generally use the higher between those two, town manager and, how do we say that out?
NESDEC.
Thank you, NESDEC. But in fact, really what we did use was the numbers that your department came up with as making sort of more sense for our overall schools. Cause I was thinking in my head, oh wait, you just told us a higher number, and now we're making class allotments sort of based on that. But that maybe, help me understand just to make sure I got, I, I have that right. Cause then if I added up those two slides that you had, the kindergarten, the elementary, and the second one, secondary, it seems like it comes up to actually your number, the six thousand eleven.
Yep.
Okay.
So you, you, you have it exactly right. And, and basically, you know, the method for that yellow bar prediction, which is the, you know, a school department enrollment forecast for one year, next year, is to, uh, for grades K through twelve, is to look at both projections, town manager.
Yep.
And NESDEC, and take the higher of those projections for all grades, with the exception of kindergarten, grade one, and grade nine.
Right.
And basically what, uh, we did is we took kind of a hi- instead of taking an average cohort survival ratio, we took the, the highest percentage survival ratio.
Got it.
Uh, in the, in the most recent three years to try to protect ourselves, um, kind of on the upside, not be surprised. And that's how that six thousand eleven was derived.
Thank you. My envelope math still works, so that's good to know.
And I was thinking, uh, what Jason said, as we look at this every year, you know, we did hear, oh, we're, we're gonna see reduction. And we've not seen that, our, we continue to grow. Um, we're a desirable community, especially for, um, our schools. So when we look at, you know, kindergarten's really hard to predict, not knowing how many might choose private. When they come, maybe first grade, are we able to get any data, new move-ins? Is there any information we can get from those families that are coming in at the first grade level?
I'm not sure if we're collecting that or not.
Yeah, we know when they register, whether they're coming from a private K within town because they chose, you know, for a full-day option, they didn't have, if they didn't get through the lottery or for whatever reason, they, they stayed in private, uh, kindergarten. Uh, we know if they're moving from another community.
One town to another, yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, in my experience, just anecdotally, um, you know, the, it's both. And, you know, the, the registrar's office reaches out to all the, uh, families of, uh, students who we know are enrolled in private schools to see if, and ask them for early indications if they're planning on enrolling or not. That helps us with planning. In addition to that, uh, we, coming to, uh, first grade is still a, a point where families sometimes will make that shift and move to a new community and start elementary level. Um, and so I, I think we tend to see, every year it's different, but we do tend to see, uh, a decent amount of new, uh, families in the community who enroll, uh, for first grade. So year-to-year, it may vary a little bit, but we do try to do some, some early work, uh, especially around the students we know who are living in the community, who are already enrolled someplace else for kindergarten to try to get a sense of where, where we might be for the next year. And will, we may revise, uh, some of these numbers as we get more of that information.
Information, right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Collins, your estimating skills are always spot-on. I mean, we're really close every year. I think that's very helpful as we look at what our needs are going to be moving into a new budget cycle as well. Anything further?
Just wanna thank Ms. Collins for the report. And, uh, in terms of the, uh, we're, we're going to actually be getting some very, uh, some additional interesting information because for the first time, and certainly time I've been superintendent, we'll be engaging the services of, of a demographer as we do the work around redistricting. And so we're gonna be getting a very detailed look at future projections for elementary, not only in terms of numbers, but in terms of where those students may be, um, emerging from in terms of a new housing stock, or where neighborhoods that might be ripe for turnover in terms of, uh, some of that in-migration as it's termed. So that will, will be, uh, will be an interesting process for sure. And I'm looking forward to, to getting some more of that information. But, uh, you know, the year-to-year is, is very accurate and, uh, that helps us with the planning, especially around budget resources. Uh, but I think, uh, Mr. Collins has been wise to look at some of these trends over time in terms of where the method doesn't really predict, uh, for all the reasons that you stated earlier. So, uh, but thank you.
Okay, next we are going to have a report on district communication. Uh, one of the goals of the school committee and the superintendent is to improve communications with the community. And a survey went out on the end of October. And, uh, Dr. Soria will provide us with a report on that survey.
Thank you very much. And, uh, I'm just getting over a cold, so my apologies for my froggy voice, and so bear with me. I'm pleased to present, uh, this information from the survey that we did, uh, send out. And, uh, I think, uh, you know, first of all, just thank the people who participated. I thought we had excellent participation, six hundred and seventy-five total responses. Of that, five hundred and ten parents, two hundred staff members, twenty-eight community members who are neither a parent nor a staff member, um, and fourteen town meeting members. And, uh, people could check multiple boxes, um, so, you know, there's, there's some dual, uh, pieces there. Maybe even some who qualified in three. Uh, but it was, uh, an excellent response. It certainly gives us a cohort that we can get some good information from. I don't think we, we certainly have a statistically valid sample when it's that, not high of a number. In terms of participation, it also was helpful that it was, uh, uh, pretty equal. Uh, again, parents, there's lots of parents who might have students across different grade spans, but it was pretty even as you can see from those three bars, preschool through grade four, grade, middle school grades, five through eight, and high school grades. In terms of staff, we had a little higher response rate from our elementary teachers, uh, who were, um, we had a hundred of them. And then, uh, about twenty-eight and twenty-four percent from the middle and the high school level. In terms of the, what we asked people to do, we asked them to rate, uh, the different forms of communication that we have as a district, um, on a scale of one to four, uh, from anything basically of their preference or how, uh, helpful they found that method of communication to be. So that will give us a sense. And then, uh, we, we asked them to rate twenty-six different forms of communication. Uh, what ended up happening with that was that, uh, they were very consistent. If you filtered the data by whether parents were answering, or, or staff, or community members, there were really very, very minor differences in terms of how they rated things. So I didn't feel it was necessary to present in all those different types of, uh, filters. There were a couple of slight variations. For example, Coolidge is used in a much more robust way at the high school level. Parents at the high school rated that as a more helpful type of communication than elementary parents would who don't usually experience, uh, using that particular platform. than elementary parents would usually experience using that particular platform. So the summary and analysis here will focus on the overall ratings. Start here with the top 10 forms of communication. And these happen to work out that the 10 highest ranked were all higher than an average of, a weighted average of 2.5 out of four. Email's king. Preference for email is very strong in starting with, you know, principal emails and then from teachers and then emails from myself. And this is something that you may recall when we talked about doing this survey, there was a national survey I provided some data from that was done a few years ago. And at the time, email would, and that survey also was, was the strongest. I'm presuming because of the direct nature of it and that people are used to it and it's, it's something that people express some, some strong preference for. The number four and five telephone voice messaging system and text messages, that's, that's a method we typically only use either for like the last couple of days when we canceled school due to snow, or if it's something that is of an emergent nature, which is pretty unusual, that we need to get people's attention, or something of great importance. If there's, you know, a principal might send out a voicemail message to remind people it's going to be the curriculum nights coming up. Or, but we really have been careful over the years not to overuse it. We didn't want to be bombarding people with, with voicemails or phone calls. We get enough of those annoying telemarketing ones, all of us, I'm sure. We don't want to be contributing to that. But it is something that I think if used prudently is something we know goes directly to people and people will pay attention. The other way we use it, I know Mr. Collins' department uses it effectively, making sure people are aware of deadlines. You know, we have a very significant late fee for our bus fee, for example. If, and we're able to thankfully, because of the nature of our communication system and then the fact that it integrates with Power School, we can just cherry pick families who have not paid the bus fee and they're coming up on the deadline. And you'll get a voice mail, a voice call, you'll get a text message that says, you know, just reminder, we see you haven't paid yet, you know, want to remind you of the deadline. There's going to be a late fee after it. So there's multiple opportunities for us to communicate with people. But people who have already done it aren't going to be bothered by that because we only communicate with those who haven't. In terms of the other, rest of the top 10, curriculum nights or back to school nights are popular. And those, I know our administrators certainly put a lot of time and effort into, into those evenings. But particularly, obviously, parents getting a chance to meet teachers, hear from the teachers, what's going to be happening during the school year. There is that energy of the opening of the school year as well. The community bulletin email we send out with information about the different community events is highly rated. The website, I was pleased to see was, was thought to be helpful by a majority of folks. And Power School Parent Portal, where a lot of valuable information people need or need to interact with in order to sign kids up for things and things of that nature. Number 10, infographics, I thought that was interesting is isn't that we actually send a whole lot of infographics out. It's something I think we'd like to do more of. But the fact that people like that, and I think that's kind of signals to us that that's a good and perhaps method to use if we're trying to get certain messages across. And so, you know, I think just the overall analysis of what was rated at the top level, things that are pushed directly, especially email, just talked about the idea of auto phone calls and texts, what we use them for. The website and the parent portal, often there's some utility there as well. So we would expect people to want to engage with that. Infographics, as I mentioned, reviewed positively. As far as what was rated in the middle, anything from two to 2.5 out of four, emails from PTOs, our annual report that we started putting out a couple of years ago. And last year, we were actually going to be getting one out that actually covers the last two years sometime in the next few months. Schoology posts, for those who do use Schoology, the school journal, recent edition just went out. That gets mailed to every residential home in Shrewsbury. It's been, has been the case for the last 20 years, published three times a year. And then paper flyers and student backpacks was interesting because about a decade plus ago, when I became superintendent, that was actually a source of somewhat of controversy. It was perceived as something that was busting our budget because just these stacks of paper flyers that were going home in kids' backpacks, although ironically, a lot of them were provided by outside groups and whatnot. But it also was a big cost in time in terms of just organizing that every year, getting them to kids, getting them home. But interestingly, now in the world where communication is mainly electronic, the paper flyer stands out. And sometimes we'll get requests from people that want the, the school committee's policies essentially to do things electronically and not have a blizzard of paper going home all the time. But we, and we do make some exceptions for specific where we think it warrants it. But that was interesting to see that was rated there. In addition, you know, specific forums on different topics in the community, Facebook posts, short online videos and PTO parent organization meetings were also in that middle range. And in terms of analysis, a lot of traditional types of communication were in this mid-range, including in-person meetings and forums, as well as the paper flyers. A lot of it's more informational than actionable. And so maybe why they weren't rated as, maybe as highly as, as the ones in the top 10. And then finally, the bottom ones who came out in the ratings, what we're experiencing right now, broadcast of school committee meetings, we don't have Nielsen ratings, but that's, that's where that came in. Twitter, which we've been using more, you know, putting it on our homepage and certainly I and some other leaders in the district have been sending out, as well as some educators. The annual report that the town of Shrewsbury puts out, which has a school department report within it, was rated 22nd. TV show that I put on from time to time, which to be truthful, the last couple of years has been fairly sporadic. And that is something that, again, interestingly, some of the comments, talked about people cutting the cord and not being as tuned in. I think people just surfing channels and landing on, oh, that's interesting. I'll watch a few minutes. That may not be happening as much. 24 and 25, I'm not a financial advisor. I'm not trying to invest in newspaper stock based on those responses, either for the surprising, the paper newspaper piece wasn't particularly surprising to me. But local newspaper websites, I was expecting that to rate higher. And so it's, it's curious to see that people are not, you know, either not using it or not finding it helpful. And that's not something that people are consuming communication about the school district. And then finally, the, the School Talk, school committee TV show, which I am absolutely confident has nothing to do with content, but more about platform. And one thing we will try to do, of course, one suggestion is to try to push these things out through some of our other channels so that people may have an opportunity to, to click a link and tune in. But that's a familiarity piece as much as anything. And so, again, I think they're not, again, not pushed. Different cultural norms about newspapers in particular. I mean, obviously, there was a time not too long ago that every single one of these meetings would be covered by a stringer from Telegram and Gazette. And that changed a few years ago when that newspaper contracted. And that's not necessarily a good thing. But that's just the changing nature of media coverage and, and local news. Cord cutting, I think that one thing in, you know, in terms of strategy, finding ways to help people understand where they can, how they can access video content, whether it's these meetings or whether it's School Talk or a show we do or, or the Beal sing-along, whatever it might be, if you're, if you're not subscribing to local cable. And then social media, which is interesting, that national piece that we had looked at back in the fall, indicated that social media wasn't rated as highly by parents, that people anticipated it might be, given the changing nature of things. Facebook rated slightly higher than Twitter. But at the same time, doesn't mean it can't be a useful channel. Just have to, you know, that's interesting context for us to understand. That's where people rated those pieces. The overall ratings of the effectiveness of communication, and now I want to emphasize this is related to the work of the school committee. I'm communicating on behalf of the school committee often, mostly, and through my role. And I, and you can see that overall, it's a little harder to see with the, with the colors there. But essentially, the, the yellow is effective and the light blue is highly effective. And so overall, people feel effective and with some room for improvement. And then as far as from my role, mostly effective and highly effective. And again, through my role, I'm doing a lot more communication, obviously directly with, with the community. And then the overall from the school district, you know, vast majority effective or highly effective. And so that's, it's a good news story. But of course, like anything else, room for improvement and we want to try to see if there are ways we can get better. We also had 120 people comment, which was, I think, very helpful to give some context to things. And obviously, there's some included some praise, some constructive criticism, different suggestions. A lot of it is actionable. It's certainly valuable. There were a few different themes. One was appreciation for the level and quality of communication. There's a couple of quotes if people want to look at the, the slides on the web and you can see them, not going to quote them to you. But essentially, people appreciate the number of forums they can get information in, and then how they do connect with, with families and the community. Another theme was information overload, which is just part of, I think, you know, a theme in society, obviously, not just with school community, school communications. Certainly, the, the idea that there's lots of different directions things are coming from. And that's, you know, are there ways to streamline things? It's something that we should consider where, where that's possible and realistic. Another theme was, was for length. And of course, right now, you, there's been a movement to, especially through social media and whatnot, maybe shorter bursts of information more frequently or, or ways that may be consumed a little bit differently. And how is it that, you know, adding things, whether those are graphics or making sure things aren't too wordy. So these are all things that, you know, we can certainly pay attention to and see if there's some modifications we can, we can make to make sure people are reading what we said. The idea of sort of a central location and consistent format so people can be predictable or if they miss, they'll miss something, they know where to go to try to find it. So those are pieces that will be something we'll take a look at. And then other things, everything from, you know, how user-friendly different platforms might be. And like, of course, anything we're pulling the public, sometimes people will say, I love this platform. Some will say, I hate that platform. And so that's a piece that we have to wrestle with, of course. We're not going to make everybody, everybody's preference is not going to be the same. Timeliness and maintenance of things. One thing that came across from a few folks is, you know, I've tried to send out usually on a Wednesday to remind people, we have a meeting. Here's what the school committee is talking about tonight, assuming people might want to tune in. Some folks would like to see that earlier in case they may want to, you know, put it into their calendar or whatnot to, to make it appointment television, I guess. But that's something that we should, it's an easy fix, frankly. The kindergarten lottery process, which we did have some hiccups with last year as we transitioned to a new Power School version. I wasn't surprised to see some feedback there and we're already working on that. And then again, whether it's social media, use of video messages, mixed feelings. Some people like it, some people don't. So some of these things are going to appeal to certain audiences and others won't. So finally, next steps, certainly tonight, reviewing the feedback with you. We'll be reviewing it with the leadership team, finding ways to maybe centralize some things to make sure people can know where to retrieve things. Try to look at what these platforms are, where do we want to invest our time and energy, what makes sense. And, and, you know, sometimes, you know, some, we have some opportunity for this, but there are starting to be some products that come out that are not necessarily that expensive, where you can get metrics on how many people are reading it, or how many people are viewing something. That's helpful, obviously, in an ongoing way to see what's, what's resonating with people. And how do you push content that right now might be people need to go to it. But how do you push that out to people in a way that doesn't feel like they're getting overwhelmed by more things or that it's, but they'll hopefully have the opportunity if they're interested. And then as far as, you know, probably some opportunities, especially for the leadership team, we're obviously very used to doing professional development around whether it's leadership or whether it's educational issues and things like that. But none of us were, I shouldn't say none of us, but maybe someone was. But, you know, we weren't really trained to be communications experts. So what is it that might be helpful to us just in terms of some habits or things that we can adapt that can make things work better for the folks with whom we're trying to communicate? So that's where we're at and would be happy to take any questions and interested in hearing the comments from the school committee relative to this information.
Comments? Lindsay? I, I have so many thoughts about this one. As somebody who's been in government my entire professional career, you both can't communicate enough. And when you communicate a lot, it's too much. And so this is a really hard balance. So that's one hat I wear. And as a parent, I was laughing about your reference to our previous paper blizzard because my kitchen island feels like a paper blizzard with three kids in, in school. So, you know, feeling, feeling that tension, I think I would, I want to just remark that I, as a, as a, as a parent and a community member, have never felt like the schools, whether it's my principals or my individual teachers, were not doing their utmost to communicate. And often it felt like, oh, I missed the thing and I missed, you know, amongst all, amongst all of it. And so, and I know it takes a huge amount of time, right? Well, I think I get three different principal announcements or teacher things every Sunday. And I think, oh my goodness, someone is spending their Sunday as one of our principals, putting together a newsletter and making sure it's right and putting time and effort into doing that. And I think my, my sort of takeaway and my suggestion to, as you sit down with your leadership team, is that we spend time as this committee, thinking a lot about our resource, particularly our financial resources. But I think probably one of our most important resources is time and that we have to be willing to adapt and change. And all of these things, the idea that we have 26 different ways to communicate in of itself is like, that's a lot of ways to communicate. And all of them take time and effort. And so if we're putting in, you know, as an example, the school journal, I love it. But I'm a school committee member. Of course I love it and I want to read that. If we're putting in a ton of time and effort to put out three editions of a print media and we're getting some feedback that print media as a whole is not where people are getting their information, then maybe it's a part of our job to say, is that a good resource of our time, right? And use of our time. Or, you know, School Talk, as much as we here like all of those topics, what is, what is the use of the time? And so I think it's important for us to reflect. I'm really glad that you did it. I think at first I thought, oh, is this important to do? But now that we have some data to look at, to think about, oh, let's use that time well. Because I also want all of our principals and our teachers to be thinking about social emotional learning and STEM and project-based curric, and all of these other very important things. And communication will always be that one that, that needs attention, but let's make sure it's a good use of time. So I'm, I would accolades for having done it. And, and this is a conversation that probably every few years needs a little refresh and look at what's a good, what's a good use and what's, as it's dynamic and changing, but also that we don't just get stuck doing it. And we ever add to the list of ways to communicate. And now there's a new social media thing that we're supposed to be doing and we never take anything off our list. That's probably not, not a great path forward.
Jason?
So I would just want to, first of all, start and echo what Ms. Evernand said and just commend the creation of this survey. I'm glad we embarked on this process because I think that this was an important topic to delve into. These were important questions to be asked. We all know that the world of communications is changing very, very quickly. And I do think that these are questions we need to ask. A couple of comments that I want to offer, and again, just being very happy and finding a lot of this information to be very useful. Two things in particular. First, I want to stick up a little bit for some of the methods that didn't perform quite as well. In particular, the school journal, not that per se, 100% we should stick to a print medium, but I look at some of the materials that go on Shrewsbury Media Connection, the school journal. One advantage that those modes of communication have is that they are communications to the broader community as opposed to just the parent community. Certainly, if you look at the audience for this survey, it is heavily represented by the parent community, which is important. They're, they're our primary audience of adults in the community we want to communicate with. And obviously, you know, they're much more likely to, to need to receive information on a timely or emergency basis. And obviously, they're most important. But it is important for us as a district to communicate with the broader community, especially us as a school committee. It's our job to advocate for the resource needs of this district to the broader community. So I do want to just highlight that there are a few things on this list that didn't perform quite as well that I want us to keep in mind are important communications tools for the broader community. Now, how important are they? Do we need three pieces of a print medium every year? You know, do we, do we want to rethink how we do some of these things? Some of these things are very important questions to ask, but I don't want to lose sight of our responsibility to communicate with audiences beyond the parent community as well. And the second thing that I wanted to highlight for our administrative team to consider as you review this data is there was one really significant communications trend that wasn't per se captured in these questions that I think we have all observed. And, and I know the administration has had to deal with as well. And that is the increasing propensity of people, especially parents, to try to crowdsource answers to questions on social media platforms. And what I mean by that is, as opposed to, you know, a parent may have a question and as opposed to either going into an email or the school department's website to find that answer or directly contacting a school department official, a post will be placed in a, in a social media setting to try to crowdsource an answer. And sometimes this is fairly benign. It's, you know, it's tomorrow, an early release day. When's the last day of school? When does February vacation start? And you can be, you know, when three people respond with the same piece of information, it's fairly reliable. I want to, I guess, caution the community at large and also our administrative team. I think this speaks to the need to perhaps have a centralized location for certain pieces of information. I know we have, I believe we have a frequently asked questions section of our website, but maybe reconsidering what type of information is available there, maybe giving that some better play. Because one thing that does concern me is, and again, sometimes these questions are benign, but sometimes there are questions where I see the responses are not accurate. Sometimes there are questions that may delve into student-specific matters that it would, it would, I want members of the community to understand it would never be even legal, much less appropriate for a representative of the school department to actually participate in a discussion about a student-specific or even a staff-specific matter in a public forum. So one trend that I'm certainly seeing is people who, instead of doing what they might do with Google or a search engine, are putting a question directly into a social media forum and hoping the general public will provide an answer. And sometimes that's fine and sometimes it's not. sometimes it's not. So we need to consider that people are, are using that as a format to get information, it's not feasible for our staff to spend their day trolling through these groups, or people's personal accounts to try to respond to these, so to the extent that we can create some sort of hub where some of these common questions can be answered, or people could be pointed in the right direction for certain types of questions, that would be very helpful.
Good point. Dylan?
So, many interesting points made by my colleagues, and I'm glad you did this survey. I think when it comes to us weighing the validity of a survey, it's, it's very nice to have some face validity to some of these answers, and to be able to say this makes sense. And what I'm taking away from this is, is that if we push information out to our target audience, that's more successful than expecting them to follow us, that we want to be brief, that we want to be timely, and if we can use graphics to make the point, that that's probably preferable, and, and those things all make sense to me, and so I think whenever we want to communicate, it's, it's probably worthwhile to look at those boxes and say, "Are there ways in which we can do this that will work?" I think the only thing that I'm just learning with different organizations that I belong to, is that maybe there are other tools that we can use, and, and sort of relevant to the fact that people go to the medium that they're used to for searching for things. I've, I've run into more than a few websites where if I try to find a piece of information using the search box on the website, it's, it ends up being a hopeless tangle of, of things, whereas if I use Google, it, it gets me often on that website to where I want to be. And so therefore, if I were to post information I wanted the public to be able to find quickly, I would, you know, pay attention to finding ways to label it, or whatever, so it pops up on the top of a Google search, it's not just in a logical spot on the website. And the other is, is having to do with email, and I'm just, again, learning with another organization that I'm active in, regarding various organizations that sell email services, and the fact that if we use a tool that not only beams out our email in formats in a way that's, that's pleasant for people to read quickly, but also it tells you how many people opened your email, how long they took, whether they followed a link, and, you know, also they get the, the chance to unsubscribe, so you can get rid of the people who don't want to hear from you anyway, and, and clean up their email box as well. It's a very efficient way of dealing with things, and, and at least with the organization that I'm dealing with, it's, it's quite inexpensive. So those sorts of tools give you the ability to monitor the effectiveness of your communication, and I think that's, that's worth considering, given all the information we've learned here. Unfortunately, School Talk doesn't check off any of those boxes that I just listed, and I-
There's no ME in our future.
There's no ME, and, yeah.
Well, the late-night SMC audience was perhaps not captured in our survey.
Yeah. But I, I, I think, at least with regard to that, though, I think the fact that we can now access Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube, which makes it much more accessible than waiting for it to drift onto the screen on Channel 27, and, you know, perhaps the opportunity to break the episodes into 10-minute segments or something, so that they're a little more digested.
And I think this was a good survey, because we're close to it, and it's really good to kind of look outside and get other opinions, because, you know, maybe we think it was great, but now we're seeing this is not what the community is looking for, and it's, it's almost like in a marketing concept, you know, what information should we be putting out, and how should we do it? Because I think we're seeing that there's overkill, because we're trying to give everybody all the information, and like you said, people look at different things, and they might like one, but the other person doesn't, so how do we get the most information out to people in the most effective and time-efficient? I think time is another big thing we have to look at, and Dale raised the point where we can take snippets of these meetings or other things, and push them, so people aren't getting this whole, you know, two-hour meeting, they're getting the one piece that they're really interested, because if we're, we're doing overkill, then people aren't paying attention to the content. So I'm really glad we're doing it, I think there's some actionable items to move forward with, and it'll improve how we communicate with the community.
Anything else? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our minutes from our school committee meeting held on November 13th, 2019, and our workshop that was held on November 18th, 2019. Are there any changes or corrections? There being none, these can be marked as approved. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purposes of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit B, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and acting on a student residency issue, and we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Roll call, vote is required. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Palas?
Aye.
Ms. Evernand?
Myself.
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.[1746.33]